We're gonna start the recording before we start the meeting.
Oh, well, hang out here. I thought we were ready for seven o'clock. That way I'm not remembering to start the recording when it's seven or three.
Or like I did this morning, remember to... Alrighty. We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller? Sato?
Here.
Beck? Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone? And Vogelsinger?
Here.
Who am I missing? I have Miller and Beck are absent.
Serone.
Serone. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next will be a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the VATV recording and broadcast. Item number three is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything this evening?
No.
Alderman Miller has entered the meeting at 7:01. Okay. And then next is matters from the public for items not on the agenda.
We do not have any members of the public who are online with us today.
I don't see anybody sitting behind you, so... That will go away. Up next then will be item five, which is ordinance 21-29, vacation of a railroad street right-of-way. And Scott, I've got that.
Here.
You want to go ahead and start that? It's a pretty simple one.
Yeah, so basically this is a right-of-way that was appearing to be vacated, but it wasn't vacated back years ago when we vacated a lot of other streets of the Park District. And this one, we found as part of some, doing some research to try and figure out why the trail appeared to be on private property. So after doing research, we realized that, we had the county correct that, but we also had conversations with the Park District about this and various other land issues, as you could see on the other item on tonight's agenda. And we had the discussion with them, and it was their preference to have the entire right-of-way vacated to them. Now, under normal circumstances, half of the right-of-way goes to the adjacent property owners. So the Park District would be entitled to the western half of the southern half of the southwest quarter of this. So we talked to them about it, and they decided that they would like to have the whole thing. There really is no benefit to the adjacent property owners because there is electric lines, as well as the bike path on the eastern half of this, and the electric and utility lines on the western half. There's really no private usage that's really able to be used for it. It's really pretty much impressed with public use. So we have structured the ordinance that it would be vacated directly to the Park District, and we have to structure it that way if we wish to do so. So staff has drafted it that way. We have not sent notice to the adjacent properties because of the fact that it's really impacted by the existing improvements, but we do recommend vacating the entire right-of-way to the Park District.
Okay. And the right-of-way or the electrical lines that go through there, are they ours or are they comeds or both?
Both. They're both ours and comeds.
So that is where the commed towers go through there, okay.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I think this is pretty simple. It's always one of these things that we keep finding, little pieces like this that pop up, like the driveway into a parking lot on Route 25. Little things like this that just all of a sudden show up.
Usually we find some of these things and we're looking at something else actually, and then we're like, okay, put that on the list of things to fix.
Oh, good to get taken care of. Anybody have any questions? Comments on this? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 21-29, vacation of railroad street right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next is ordinance 21-30, and that's the requesting of a transfer of a certain parcel from the Batavia Park District. This is out in the Prairie Commons subdivision. I think we wanted to wait until after stuff got built out there so we knew what the Park District was gonna use, because they had made a connection through to the Prairie Path, correct Scott?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we need access to get into domain. It's at the water tower that's out there.
Right, we kind of knew this swap was gonna be necessary from the beginning because of the way the well site was, the elevated water tower site was platted out. So we knew the Park District would need a piece from us, and we also, we deliberately had them acquire a piece so that we could do a swap with them, because that's the easiest way to do property transfers with the Park District. So they're basically equivalent pieces, so they would get the northern piece of the well site, the elevated water tower site, and then we would acquire the western part of the park site that's where our driveway is. So then it would square our boundaries with the Park District in that area.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about this one? Another very simple little thing, and the first ordinance here is to request the property from the Park District. And then the following one will be for the transfer from the city to the Park District.
Right.
Okay, no questions. I will make the motion to recommend to council ordinance 21-30, requesting transfer of certain parcel from the Batavia Park District.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, next up is item number seven, which is Resolution 21-60-R, authorizing the transfer of property to the Batavia Park District and intergovernmental agreement. So this is the other half of that little land swap out there.
That's correct, and the Park District also has passed similar resolutions and ordinances for their exchange too.
No other questions? I'll make a motion to recommend to council Resolution 21-60-R, authorizing transfer of property to the Batavia Park District Prairie Commons and intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next is item number eight, Resolution 21-056-R, authorizing master services agreement with TBK Associates. Hold on, Chantet?
Indeed. So the city has an opportunity to take additional documents and get them into a digital format. We already have a system that we use, but this is a recommendation to go with TKB Associates. They already have contracts with municipalities in northern Illinois as well as nationwide. The proposal is to assist us with setting up a cloud system, administering it, and assisting us with the scanning. They also are set to train staff members on how to use it, and then also to train our IT department on how to administer the system. Howard, I think you are available to answer any questions. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. Howard, will this system be, does it just take a picture of the document, put the document up, or will people be able to use the search engine within the city's website and search by words and phrases to find a particular document?
This product has a couple of pieces to it, some internal, some that will be web portions that will allow more transparency for residents to search for documents. So to answer your question, yes, what's put on the web, which will be available to the public, can be searched. Internally, this is going to help every department organize their documents by adding indexes to documents. It has the ability to do full-text searches. These are currently features we don't have now with our typical file and print sharing. It has workflow that allows us to route forms. So it does quite a bit more than just save the documents, and it does help us organize.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I would recommend that we send Resolution 21-56-R to council for approval of an MSA for TKB Associates.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Our clerk, call roll, please.
Second, Knopf? Just making sure, thank you. Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Thinking then Resolution 21-61-R, that is for task order number one, which is for the implementation of the system for amount not to exceed $32,810, and I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Do we want that unconcerned, or do we want to talk about the opportunity for transparency in government? That kind of feels like a good thing to do.
Yeah, I think we could like put the master services agreement in the consent agenda, and then have the other one on the regular agenda, and you could talk about that. That'll be able to have documents easily searchable, you know, for transparency. That would definitely be something good to talk about.
I think, I think that's good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, up next is item number 10, ordinance 21-28, mending Title VII, Chapter III, Section 5 of the municipal code related to cemetery charges. And let's see, Alderman Serone is not here tonight. Is Alderman Malay?
The agenda shows public utilities, it really should be city services.
That should be city services?
My memo's over city services.
Okay. You know what, Gary, then you can just take it.
How's that sound?
We'll do that. You spoke up, you can speak about it.
I would, thank you. Items number 10 and 11 really go hand in hand. We're gonna skip 10, come right back to that, and then item number 11 is the resolution. So under our ordinance, it says that fees can be established via a resolution. And so in my memo, I discussed the fact that it's been since 2005, since the city has updated its cemetery charges. We've been wanting to update them for the last several years, hand in hand with the proposed columbarium project, but that project has gotten pushed now several times. And we're now in a position where we are running out of the more desirable adjacent and cremation-only spaces. So we're really in need of opening sales in Big Oaks 4, which is kind of the southern portion of the West Side Cemetery. So in combination with the opening of Big Oaks 4, we felt it was a good time to bring these increases to the cemetery, cities' cemetery charges. We have reviewed these fee increases and charges with other, with our local funeral service providers. They've actually kind of had a bug in our ear for the last couple of years, asking us when we were going to raise fees, because they're recognizing also that we're getting a lot of non-resident sales. We have reviewed the fees that we're proposing in relation to other area cemeteries, and our fees that we're proposing will still keep us competitively in the market. And I did include an example from River Hills Memorial Park, which is on Route 25, just to the south of the city. You go back to the exhibit, then, the exhibit shows the various proposed fees. And we laid it out so that the fees are for the calendar years, 21 through 25, and then at that point in time, the fees stay fixed, 25 and future years, and we can of course revisit at some point in the future. I'm not going to go through the list of those various fees, but if you hop back to item number 10 in the ordinance, that's where we struck the fees out of the ordinance and just made the ordinance the text. And the first line of that item number A says, second line, says the city council by resolution may periodically alter fees to accommodate increased costs and needed reserves for cemetery maintenance and acquisitions. So that's how we got to doing item number 11 by resolution to establish those. Stop that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Do we know, Gary, are we going to get the columbarium done this year? Is that gonna be started?
That's on hold with budget issues right now. One of the couple of projects that were placed on hold early on this year.
Okay.
We will revisit that.
Okay.
Just a random comment, Craig, on page four of the PDF, exhibit one. At the top, full infant or cremation graves, cremation is misspelled.
Thank you.
I have a question. So you're price comparing to River Hills Memorial Park, which is privately owned? What about other local townships and cities?
Good question. Our street superintendent, Bill Cullum, he's not able to be here tonight because there's a family emergency, but he did look at all surrounding cemeteries, not just private. So we have made sure we're competitive with Geneva, with the other township cemeteries as well. We are remaining competitive. We are not wanting, never have wanted this to be a big moneymaker. This is a cost recovery and a service to...
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 21-28, mending Title VII, Chapter III, Section 5 of the municipal code related to cemetery charges.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet? And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay. Then I'll also make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 21-051-R, approval of modifications to cemetery charges.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions on charges? Roll call?
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, up next will be item number 12, which is Resolution 21-57-R, approving 21 to 25 electric tree trimming contract. Gary?
Similar to a number of items related to electric utility, it is difficult to find a lot of competition in our area. I do try to go into some of the history in my memo. Generally with us being in comm ed territory, there's limited market for municipal tree trimmers. Most of the tree trimmers in our area work for comm ed, and so you basically have to be a large-sized company to work for comm ed. And we, we as municipals kind of get, kind of get whatever they have left over, if you will. Asplund National Tree Company, they've been doing the city's electric line trimming for as long as I've been here, and I believe for years before that. We have act, we do actively every year try and seek out other tree companies. For some years, we've actually had more than one bidder, but virtually, well, almost, you know, every year, Asplund has always been the lowest bidder. I did explain the fact of what had happened with the past year's programs and how we've had some years with very competitive year-over-year percentage increases, and other years with very high percentage increases. So this year, we took a different approach, given the fact that we knew we would receive only bids from one or two vendors. And we've also, you know, knew that we'd received some volatile bids in the past, but also some consistent bids. We decided to go out this year for a five-year renewable contract, and that's in the same format as like our solid waste contract. It's the same format that our landscaping maintenance contracts follow. Basically, it is a five-year contract, but every year, both parties can agree to go forward or not. If we have problems, we can just terminate the contract at any time. Asplund was the only bidder, and they bid annual price increases on a dollar per man-hour basis. And you, I showed you then the percentage, so 3% increase, 2% increase, 4% increase, 3% increase. So really very competitive year-over-year percentage increases through the year 2025, which will provide stability and consistency, and that's why we are recommending to go forward with Asplund for the 21 to 25 electric tree trimming contract.
Okay, let's record reflect, Alderman Serone came in at 7:21. Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions on this? I know we've had issues over the years where we've discussed, you know, how we could do this, and the cost for the city, I think, to go out and get the equipment and have to do this would be much more than this is.
We don't have the man-hours.
Yeah, we'd have to hire more people just to be able to do the tree trimming. And go ahead, Mark.
Is there a reason we didn't like try and partner up with the other cities again to get a better quote?
Our first, our first and only recent experience with that was not good. We also have, we have successfully done that with things like mosquito treatment. We did that with the solid waste. If you recall, we, all three of us went out together with the same solid waste program. We've done that with sewer just this year, 2021, we did this with sanitary sewer cleaning and lining. We struggle with all of those efforts because one community wants things done a certain way, this community wants things done a different way, and the third community wants things done a third way. And we have, we have struggled a little bit trying to make that work in the past. I think when it's successful, it's good that it's successful, but when it's not successful, we experienced like what we did with, when Naperville took it a few years ago, and that was really not good. We ended up with bad pricing and didn't even do the program that. That's why we just did it our way, our, by ourselves this year.
My second question, am I seeing that this is basically a quarter million dollars over budget? That what I'm saying, we had $200,000 budgeted this year, and this contract would be 457?
No, we'll only be, that's, that's why I put in the line there, that the annual cost of work will be based on the approved annual budget. We are not, the dollar values that you see on those sheets are generic 1,500 man-hours. That's all they are. They're just a generic man-hour. So the actual year budget approved, which traditionally has been 150 to 200,000, that's what we'll spend. We won't spend more than that.
So you'll just take whatever the hourly timeframe and equipment and man-hours are and take 200, and that's all we'll do?
Yeah, I understand that.
That's how we've traditionally always done it.
And I think that when they bid it out the way they, I think they were here one year when we actually had somebody else come in and bid it, we might have even used them one year or two. They come in and they would bid it, and they say, okay, this is basically what they think their hours it would take to do everything that we have in the city. All the stuff that we, you know, all the lines areas that we have, and then whatever we have in the budget, so we only get through 50% of it this year, we're gonna come back and do the other 50% of it next year. Or they're gonna go to our staff, and the staff's gonna say, these are the areas we have to do this year, you know, and within our budgeted hours, that's what you're gonna get to do.
So since we didn't do it a couple of years ago, we did minimal last year, are we getting to a point that we're gonna be in trouble soon?
No, we are, we're gonna jump back into doing, you know, one year on one side of town, and the next year on the next side of town. We're, this year will enable us to be able to be doing that now for sure for the next five years, is that we can, we can have consistency in our program again.
Okay. Now, so was there estimate based on, that's what they thought it would take, but we...
No, we asked them for, what is your man-hours? How much is it gonna cost you to put a backyard crew in there? How much is it gonna cost you to put a bucket truck in there? Dollars per man-hour? That's what we asked.
Okay, and they came back with...
And they said, they, their first question would be, well, how many man-hours? That's why the bids, we included just a generic number of man-hours.
Got it.
That way you got something to compare to if somebody else were to bid it.
Exactly. AB, company A, B, and C would all be bidding the same, same thing then.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, do we know, Gary, do you know what other communities ended up using for their service?
Who they use?
Yeah, who they ended up using?
Asplund is basically it.
Is that it?
Yeah. We've had, we've solicited Homer, we've solicited, oh, the name just dropped out of my head. Who does our brush collection program?
Kramer. Kramer.
There's a company out of St. Charles that we've solicited. We really have actively tried to get other companies in.
There was Damar, and I don't know if, I don't think that Davy Tree, I don't think does municipal trimming.
No, they don't, they don't do electric.
Electrical stuff, okay.
You have to have special...
Right.
...trimmers to do it.
And, and training and equipment and everything to do around their electric.
There's a thousand tree, tree companies out there.
Yeah.
There's no tree companies out there that do electric.
I think, I think some of it too is liability insurance, I'm sure that they have to have to do that.
Lots of training there, guys.
Yeah.
Lot more so than a regular tree trimmer.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, if not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 21-57-R, approving the 21 through 25 electric tree trimming contract.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to zero.
Thank you. Next up would be item 13, which is Resolution 21-62-R, approving contract with Quad Plus for Paramount Substation Maintenance and Testing in an amount not to exceed $48,043, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Alderman Serone?
Yes, well, I'll start with apology. It's a Monday to me. So I was at the library. Yeah, this is something we do every, every five years, so pretty straightforward. Is there anything you wanted to add, Gary?
No, but I just caught a, I just caught a typo in the, in the third line of the second paragraph. We don't do perfume testing, but we do perform insulation testing, so... No, they're, um, sorry. That, that does list all the various services that they will do. This is being done to put the Paramount Transformer back into service once the, once the substation is ready to go back. And it's on, it's on schedule. We should be in July when we get this thing back up and going, so...
This is within budget?
This is within as budgeted, correct. Yep.
When we do this every five years, is that a, a different substation every year?
We do. We rotate them around. Yep.
Anybody have any questions, Mark?
So Gary, it's mentioned in there that it's in, in budget line on sixty-four thirty-five, but there's like fifteen things in there. Which of those actually covers this item? That's the only thing I was confused about because there's seven and a half million dollars in there.
Right, we've had, and, and I just noticed Rahat didn't do that breakdown. We've been, we did that breakdown in a previous memo of, and I will, I can have that done before the city council meeting. That, that's the breakdown of where all these projects are in that large lump sum.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, I would make the motion. Recommend the city council approval of Resolution twenty-one dash zero sixteen R. Block graphics.
Second.
Call please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Okay. And next will be project status. Laura?
Thank you. I just have a, a few items. I hope that on your way in today, you were able to see that the city of Batavia is probably displaying our new pride flag that we obtained last year. And we plan to have a proclamation for you at the next city council meeting next week. Letters will be going out tomorrow to South Batavia Avenue Property and Business Owners, inviting them here for a discussion on June fifteenth at five thirty to discuss the parking area that's located to the, on the west side behind the buildings between First Street and Main Street. We had a meeting last year with those business owners regarding their concerns about, really safety concerns that were happening in that area. And we had some changes immediately thereafter. We installed new lighting in the area and the, the business owners and property owners said they really appreciated that. This is kind of a next step in the, in the process to gather everyone together to look for a mutually agreeable solution to be able to fix that deteriorating parking lot and come up with a plan for future maintenance so that we don't have to be revisiting these things again in the future. We are going to be receiving some visitors from the city of Itasca tomorrow. The mayor and I are going to have lunch with them and they are interested in seeing our Wunorf on North River Street and hearing the story about how all of that came about. I also learned from their city administrator that she and their new mayor visited the boardwalk shops this past Friday because they're also very interested in, in that as a project as well. So, so both of those things receive a lot of regional attention and we're always really proud to share those positive stories with other communities. The energy legislation is still pending. There was no vote put to the floor yesterday evening. However, the hundred and second general assembly has not yet ended their session. The senate continued to meet today. The latest news is that the governor and Exelon have agreed to a deal. There is no other details available about exactly what that, what those details may be. But, you know, we anticipate that perhaps sometime even tonight or over the course of the next several days, we might still see this energy legislation headed to the senate floor for a vote. Of course, the bill is now in probably a very different state than when the house first voted to approve Seja. So it will be necessary for the house to schedule that new bill to come back to them, for them to vote on it as well. So it could still be a week, it could still be a couple of weeks from now before we really have any resolution on this issue. But I can tell you that as late as Friday, that I was receiving calls from our legislators wanting to, you know, hear our position on things. And in following the conversations that are happening, I am confident that the concerns of municipal utilities and owners of very state and those that would be affected by this legislation and the manner in which we are affected, I keep hearing our concerns reported about. And so I really feel that they're, they're getting to the right places. You know, no one is going to pass this legislation without understanding the potential impacts that it will have on our community. And I continue to monitor that hour-by-hour basis. So if I learn anything new, I, of course, will pass it along to you. But does anybody have any questions about that? The employees and I know, I know the challenge was also thrown out to our elected officials. We have a wellness challenge going on right now. We're competing with other communities. We currently have thirty-five people who are signed up and competing, which exceeds the required twenty-five people competing. So very thankful. And if you haven't signed up yet, it's not too late. Look for that email message from Diane Wyans. And there are many ways that you can receive points for engaging in wellness activities. And right now, in the Chicagoland area, we are in second. So we are, we're down to third now. All right, well, I'm going to have to hop on the bike when I get home then, Mark.
I got my two hundred points, that's all I can get.
That's right. Mark, Mark came in with the two hundred. You're in too, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Does a Harley qualify as a bike?
Family members do.
I can make sure I get two hundred points.
But not Harley. Yeah. Not four-legged family members.
Totally forgot this morning.
We have our own wellness.
I also learned this morning that the county has received its first ARPA, the American Recovery Plan, distribution of fifty-one million dollars. Now, I have not received any word that money has been received at the state level and that is how US Treasury is going to be distributing the non-entitlement units of local government, share of which we are a non-entitlement unit of local government. But once US Treasury does disperse local government's share to the state, the state has only thirty days to distribute that to us. And I've been contacting our federal legislators to ask them, where's the money? Because that is three point two six million dollars that we can apply to the effects of COVID on our residents. And I had a nice conversation with Dave Brown, our representative on King County Board today to try to coordinate things between the county and the local municipalities so that we're not duplicating efforts and we make sure that those funds go to where they can have the most impact in countering the negative effects of the pandemic in our community. And that is my project status unless somebody has any questions about specific projects.
Does anybody have any questions, Laura?
Don't you have something else?
I have one other thing that I wanted to share, Mayor. Thank you for reminding me. So we have received complaints over, you know, and it's kind of a perennial over the years about wildlife activity, whether it be that somebody sees, you know, a fox running downtown or most recently, we've received a complaint about a family of coyotes who are living in a resident's yard. And, you know, people contact us and say, you know, which department of the city do I need to call to have this family of wildlife relocated from my yard or my house? And of course, the city does not have those type of resources. We do have a contract with King County for animal control, but what this amounts to is like the stray dog situation where we can only house that animal and, and give it appropriate shelter for a short period of time, whereas the county has more appropriate facilities to care for those animals. But it does not include the removal of species like coyotes or foxes or raccoons or anything of that nature. For those types of concerns, residents need to contact a private company to have those animals relocated. And, but sometimes that is not really the response that, that people want to hear. But we simply don't have trained employees, don't have any equipment for performing those services and it, it just isn't something that we can do.
Mayor, did you get the number I sent to you from the rescue rehab place? Okay, I sent, I'll, okay, I'll have to make sure that I get that before you leave tonight.
The rescue rehab, I did see them on social media.
Right.
Because they were the ones who cared for that mangy fox in the downtown area. The gentleman who contacted us about the family of coyotes living in his yard, these are very healthy animals. So probably that, that company. But there are others out there who have an expertise in relocating wildlife, like coyotes. So, and we would highly recommend that nobody try to do that themselves without the appropriate training.
I'm done catching them.
Best left to the professionals.
Yep.
But just wanted to share that story in case it came up for anybody else in our community, that there are services that you can call. And actually, King County does have several referral agencies that they can send people to.
Having several little pockets of township area in our ward, that's been an issue, you know, real near the high school and almost, you know, within a mile of here. So that's something that, you know, people don't understand that that's not something that the city does.
Right.
Especially if they're healthy animals. If it's a, you know, an animal that looks like it's disoriented or sick or injured, then yes, we can get the county involved and they can come and help with that. But as far as rescue them or relocating them, it's usually all private.
Right.
So that's, you know, we talked about that at one of our last meetings. I have another thing that I would like to talk about. The, I had several emails and been back and forth with Andrea and the constituents. The Area Three Restoration along Morton and Lowther Streets and Jackson and Jefferson and that area, there's still some spots that are not done yet. Do we, what, what do we have from the city standpoint to force the, the restoration to get finished from the contractor? I mean, can we withhold money from them or are we done with a punch list for that? I mean, I need to, to figure out what we need to do to get that finished because there's still, there's been a couple of the yards, a couple of places that got fixed, but not all of it. I mean, and it's really, it's pretty obvious when one lot in the middle of the block gets new black dirt and new grass seed in it, and yet, three houses on either side of it, it looks terrible. You know, and I, I just, I really want to get that done. They did a great job on Main Street. There's a ton of really nice looking grass growing on Main Street and yet you go two blocks away from that and it looks terrible. So I want to find out, you know, what needs to get done, you know, so we get that finished as soon as we can, so that way it can have time to take hold and, and actually turn out nice this year for them.
We do still have money on them and we haven't finished off the punch list yet.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, Andrea and I talked about that this morning. If you, I guess I would say to those residents, go to last year's Area Three program or the Area Three program a few years ago and you'll see that the landscaping is, looks perfectly fine.
Right.
This has been a terrible spring for growing grass.
Right.
We have had.
Drought?
Yeah, I, it's not officially a drought, but I would call it drought conditions trying to grow grass.
I have not tried to redo my own yard because I know how bad it's going to be if I try to do it.
No, so yes, to answer your question, they will get resolved. We do have funds and I would encourage those residents to look down the block at their neighbors and that's how it will eventually look.
And that's one of the reasons I think we keep getting emails about it is, is the fact that they do, they walk their dog and they go two blocks away from their house and it looks great.
Yeah, Main Street is a different, Main Street is federal funding. See a different, different, we actually had sod on Main Street. Just a different kind of apples and oranges comparison. Obviously, when you put down sod, it's going to be green. So when you put down seed, it takes a while, especially when you have dog, it takes a while.
Yeah, and, and I just, you know, I want to make sure that the residents know that it's going to get done and we're not going to ignore it, we're not going to forget about it. So, you know, I just want to make sure that I keep the pressure up here that we, you know, we get this done as soon as we can. And, you know, I've said it time and time again to a couple of different residents, you know, the amount of money they're going to spend to water that and make sure it turns out nice so their front yard looks nice is nothing. You know, that, that's just, that's the reality that we're coming back and we're doing it. And in some cases, especially with the curb and new sidewalks and other stuff in the neighborhood, it's going to look better than it did before. So, you know, I, I really want them to know that they have to be part of that plan to get that done and they have to water it. They just can't ignore it and say, well, you didn't, you didn't do a good landscaping job because it died. So that, that needs to happen.
Yeah, I a hundred, a hundred percent acknowledge the frustration and the fact that they have not had a good landscaping experience, so there's no discounting that. But, you know, the larger picture, they also no longer will have sewage flowing in their van.
I, I've tried to reinforce that several times, that that's the bigger picture is that the other issues got resolved by doing the work there, so.
Yep.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that we follow up on that and get that, that finished. Okay. Does anybody else have any others? Your honor?
Just the council's fully appraised here. Fireworks committee has been meeting and a decision has been made to go ahead and fire off the Fourth of July fireworks program at Anxstrom Park slash Batavia High School on July the fourth. We are sensing that there is in the, in the community a lot of pent-up and demand for something to do. They missed this last year. You know, we had fired that show sixty-nine continuous years without a miss until last year when the pandemic forced us to stop. So they had already paid for the fireworks and they didn't have the show. So the fireworks company that we have was kind enough to say, okay, well, hold your money, give you a credit for next year's show. So we've already got much of the show paid for, but because we're just getting the word out now that we are going to have the show, we are encouraging people that if they want to make a donation to do so. We've never used, very proud of this fact, we've never used taxpayer money to pay for the fireworks show. All the fireworks that have ever been fired in Batavia were all paid for by donated money. Now going to be a seventy-year reach. We've got a little bit of a philosophical thing going on. Some people in town say, oh, this show, this year is the seventy-first show. Well, I guess in year count it could be, but it's really the seventieth show because last year we didn't have one.
Now, the public took care of that last year.
Yeah, well, I know. So as a result of that, I guess if anybody asks you in your ward or you get comments about it, please, it's being planned for July the fourth. Now, our district tells us they're running a little bit short on staff this year, so they may ask for some volunteers to come out on July the fifth and help pick up litter that's scattered around Anxstrom Park or the Busard property or the Mission Church or the fire station or wherever. Everybody seems to be in a cooperative thought that we're all going to agree to do this. Go off on July the fourth at Foxway nine-thirty at night, but I'm sure the festivities will start before that. The community band is planning to come out and play a concert around seven-thirty timeframe and stuff like that. So there'll be some community organization going on and people. Past weekend, some of you maybe were there. The VFW hosted a Memorial Day program down at the lodge at seven o'clock. And before that, the Viking Lodge had their, so took out of their fish and bacon and whatever, herring. They had biggest crowd they've ever had and out of food and they had to stop selling tickets. And then when they take time for the fireworks, fireworks for the Fourth of July, for the Memorial- And then when they take time for the fireworks, for the fireworks, for the Fourth of July, for the Memorial Day program, had probably the biggest crowd they've ever had. There are people standing around and it was outside and whatever. So, you know, several people mentioned to me that they really were glad to get out and see their friends and have this nice day. And they would hope they were going to have more to them. So I know some of the other organizations in town are making, having conversations now about such things as party in the park, Windmill City Days, how we're going to do it, how we're not going to do it. Art District is, is, seems to be caught up in some conversation amongst themselves as to how they should do it. At one point they were going to put some kind of a fence up out here and any event that was going to be held, they wanted to charge for it. I guess that idea has been dropped. So we're going to have some activities down here, but certainly as some have said, well, the city council's made all this area very socially friendly in downtown Batavia, be it Water Street or River Street or the boardwalk shops or the riverfronts or whatever. So, you know, I guess our good efforts of this is a long haul, doing this is paying off. And I would just hope all of you would take notice of this because probably this is something that, it predates my tenure as mayor. I mean, so that's a long time ago that people originally thought this idea up, that this could be transitioned into a nice community area on both sides of the river and the river could be cleaned up and all these good things have been done. And no hard to agree we've accomplished a lot of that. We got a little ways to go, but there is, there's been a accomplishment. It seems to be playing real well, especially to the newer people who are moving into town. Had some down here today that were walking around and mom and dad, grandpa and grandma, I guess they were, that were in here visiting and they had just arrived from, uh, Redding, Pennsylvania. Came to Batavia because their daughter and her children had transferred in here and they'd never been here before. They, grandpa told me he was really pleased by what he saw in Batavia and what a nice town it was and how friendly and clean and didn't seem to be any yelling and screaming and whatever have you. But they're hopefully nice and calm. We'll note that tonight we've had some excitement right south of us. They've had a double shooting down at Woodman's, North Aurora. I saw the TV folks were heading down there to shoot, film, filming. Not all creatures are clean, but, uh.
I'll tell you, I, I went to the first local car show that I've been to in the last year. Was out at the Sandwich Fairgrounds, the Illinois Spring Valley Car Club out there. And it was, there were more people there than I have ever seen and I've probably been there for ten years in a row, um, up until last year. And it, the, the pent-up demand for, you know, events like that is just incredible. I, I shudder to think how packed it's going to be at the farmer's market this weekend. If the weather is as nice this weekend as it was last, it will be packed. I mean, I was down at the boardwalk shops about two o'clock on Saturday and it was still, there was still wait to get in to each one of them because there were that many people down there still. So I, I think it's going to be a real interesting summer. I think there's going to be a lot going on. I think there's going to be a lot of lines, there's going to be a lot of places running out of stuff, which is good.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? If not, a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Knopf, second by Miller. Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, are you going to vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, any vote, anybody opposed? Okay, now we can go. Look at that.